Good morning, everyone.
We'll do it.
Let's go ahead and get started this morning. Pursuant to the Illinois Attorney General's guidance to public bodies on the Open Meetings Act during the COVID-19 pandemic dated July 2, 2020, county board members may participate without being physically present in compliance with the established provisions. So I call the March -- no, this isn't the right date at all. I call the April 27, 2021 meeting to order of physical quorum of the members is physically present, so I will entertain a motion to permit those members not physically present due to the coronavirus to participate by video or teleconference.
So moved.
You can do an all in favor, correct, Connor? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. Welcome, everyone, online. Next, our Pledge of Allegiance. I ask Member Garcia to please read us some pledge.
To the flag, United States of America, and to the republic which stands unafraid.
Great, if you could stay standing, please, and we'll welcome Dr. Sabil Ahmed from Gain Peace in Oak Brook Terrace to lead us in this morning's invocation. Oh, there we are. Dr. Ahmed, you're on mute whenever you're ready.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Bismillah, rahmanir rahim. I start in the name of God, the most beneficent and the most merciful. As I stand here today, as your fellow American, and also as a Muslim American, and as a human, oh God, we thank you for the countless blessings that you have bestowed upon all of us. As my fellow Muslim Americans are fasting in this auspicious month of Ramadan, from food and water, and also from the wrong things we're not supposed to be doing, I also thank God, and also want to pray to God, that help us to also fast away from racism, away from oppression, away from all the wrongdoings, and help us to inculcate increased charity, morality, unity, justice, and loving peace for all. Oh God, bless these beautiful members and this gathering of the DuPage boat, and help us to make decisions which are not only benefiting the county of DuPage, not only this great country of America, oh God, help us to make decisions ultimately which are going to benefit all of humanity. Oh God, as we also ask your help to create societies based upon the wonderful guidance that you have given in many, many scriptures, including the Quran. In Chapter 14, verse number 13, you mentioned, oh God, that, oh humanity, I have created you from one single male and one single female, and made you into nations and peoples and tribes, that you get to know each other, not that you may hate and despite each other, that you get to know each other, and the best amongst you is the one who is a well-mannered, God-fearing person. So God, guide this wonderful gathering, guide and bless our great nation, and guide and bless all of humanity. Amen. Thank you.
Mr. Deputy Clerk, can please call the roll?
Chaplain?
Here.
Chavez?
Here.
Covert?
Here.
Desart?
Here.
DeCiani?
Here.
Heckoff?
Here.
Garcia?
Here.
Hart?
Here.
Kuduski?
Here.
LaPlante? Ozog? Pachowski?
Here.
Renahan?
Here.
Rutledge?
Here.
Schwartzy?
Here.
Solomon?
Here.
Tornatori?
Here.
And Zay?
Here.
To get us started this morning on our presentations, I'd like to invite former Lieutenant Governor Evelyn Sanguenetti to please join us at the podium. And in spirit, as Member Desart here is our representative to the DuPage Housing Authority, so picture that she's here as well. The month of April is Fair Housing Month nationwide, during which we commemorate Congress's passage of the Fair Housing Act. It's important that we understand and celebrate what that law means to our residents here in DuPage County. Hope Fair Housing Executive Director and former Lieutenant Governor Evelyn Sanguenetti is here to accept our proclamation declaring Fair Housing Month in our county today. So please allow me a moment to read a few words, and then we'll ask us to please share your thoughts with us. Whereas in 2021, DuPage County marks the 53rd anniversary of the Federal Fair Housing Act of 1968, which prohibits discrimination concerning the sale, rental, and financing of housing based on race, color, religion, national origin, sex, disability, and familial status; and whereas the Fair Housing Act was enacted after a long and difficult journey garnering the support of Congress that it needed for passage; and whereas the assassination of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and his fight for fair housing through his housing marches in Chicago inspired President Lyndon Johnson to urge the bill's congressional approval; and whereas the illegal barriers to equal opportunity in housing, no matter how subtle, diminish the rights of all; and whereas DuPage County, through the coordinated efforts of the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, state and local governments, fair housing organizations, concerned citizens, and the housing industry, works diligently to eliminate discrimination in housing by protecting the rights of its citizens; and whereas Hope Fair Housing Center of DuPage is dedicated to eliminating housing discrimination and segregation based on race, color, religion, national origin, sex, disability, familial status, or any other characteristics protected under state or federal law; and whereas Hope Fair Housing has been the recipient of DuPage County funding which has assisted the agency in its efforts to provide housing to the families in our community, now therefore be it proclaimed that Daniel J. Cronin, Chairman of the County Board and members of the County Board, do hereby recognize April as National Fair Housing Month and command the Fair Housing Center, for exemplary work in DuPage County, enact to this 27th day of April 2021. Can you get a motion in a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Thank you very much. Wow, thank you so much on behalf of Hope Fair Housing. I wanted to speak with all of you today and all of you that hear this throughout the day, that Hope really wants all of you to use us as a resource. Many people do not know what Hope does. Many people say that it is the best-kept secret in all of Illinois. Well, as you just heard, we fight housing discrimination and segregation in all of its forms. And you could contact us free of charge. We could be found at 630-690-6500, or otherwise hopefair.org. A lot of people know if they're looking for a home that something went wrong, but they do not know whether it's indeed fair housing discrimination. And the truth is, you don't have to. That's why it's important for you to call us. The way we fight housing discrimination and segregation in all of its forms is simple. We have an education and outreach arm. You could use us at any time. Our outreach director's name is Rachel Watson, and she gives presentations throughout the state. Because the truth is, a lot of people violate the Act every day, but they just don't know. They don't know what the Fair Housing Act provides. So that's how we fight discrimination firsthand: outreach and education. But then we also fight discrimination through advocacy. And if you call us, we will take your complaint, and then we will determine whether it's indeed a violation of the Fair Housing Act. At that point, we could advocate for you. If it's not a violation, we could also let you know the other nonprofits that will help you: a landlord tenant violation, for instance, and so on. But if it's a violation of the Fair Housing Act, we advocate for you for free. We will call the landlord. A lot of times, the landlord doesn't know, and we're able to reach an agreement. Sometimes a person, they want an emotional support animal, for instance, and the landlord doesn't -- wants to charge a fine or a fee. Well, that's not allowed by law, but we give that sort of advocacy for free. Now, if the advocacy and the outreach and the education does not work, we also have an enforcement arm, where we could take matters to tribunals. And anything that we make, in light of that, we use it to continue our efforts to end discrimination and segregation. I'm here to also thank you all, because you recently approved House Bill 2775 as a measure that DuPage County supports. To me, that says a lot in the anniversary of the Fair Housing Act. To me, that says that DuPage is inclusive. To me, and to Hope, that says that you folks don't just walk the walk, I mean, talk the talk, you walk the walk. So we really thank you for supporting House Bill 2775, outlawing source of income discrimination. Thank you again, and please use us as a resource. All right, next up is our National Therapy Animal Day. So if we can please have Leslie Allison C.I., Tiffany, our dog visitor, Member Chaplain, and Member Kuduski, if you'd like to join us up here. I'm so sorry to everyone on camera who can't meet the dog today. It's really lovely. All right. As a dog lover myself, I am pleased to celebrate April 30 as National Therapy Animal Day. Leslie Allison C.I. and her dog Tiffany work as an animal-assisted therapy team when COVID practices allow at Elmhurst Edwards Hospital. We are fortunate to have this dynamic duo help us recognize these amazing therapy animals who partner with human handlers to give back to their communities. Let me read this proclamation. Whereas therapy animal teams play an essential role in the health and well-being of residents through the human-animal bond; and whereas therapy animals and their handlers interact with a variety of people in DuPage County's community, including veterans, seniors, patients, students, and those approaching end-of-life; and whereas therapy animal teams help people of all ages and settings such as hospitals, pediatric care units, schools, nursing homes, and hospice; and whereas Pet Partners, a nonprofit organization that registers therapy animals; and Bright and Beautiful Therapy Dogs, Inc., a nonprofit organization that trains therapy dogs, are just two of the many organizations in DuPage County that play an essential role in helping our residents; and whereas April 30 has been designated as National Therapy Animal Day to recognize therapy animals who partner with their human companions to bring comfort and healing to people in need, now therefore be it resolved that Daniel J. Cronin, Chairman of the County Board and members of the County Board, do hereby recognize April 30 as National Therapy Animal Day and encourage our residents to recognize the many contributions of therapy animals and their human handlers who offer healing, a sense of security, and joy to thousands of people in our region. Approve this 27th day of April 2021. Can you get a motion in a second, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you so much, Leslie, if you'd like to. Well, Tiffany is actually the hero here. Thank you very much for acknowledging us. This is near and dear to my heart, because when my parents were sick and end-of-life and in the hospital, the most important part of their journey was the therapy dog business. And they would call me to tell me that this dog came in to visit that hurt dog. And so I do this in honor of them. And it's been a wonderful experience for the past two years. We just heard back from Edward Health Hospital that we are actually coming back. They're calling us back on Thursday. We're going to start up again, so thank you again very much. Tiffany, thank you. She loves working with everybody. She loves meeting people, and thank you very much. All right, next up, we're on to some anniversary awards. So if I could invite Wendy Wagner and Don Carlson and my Tech Vice Chair Greg Hart, please up to the podium. It is my personal honor to express the county's deep appreciation of an employee who truly makes a difference. Wendy Wagner, our Deputy Chief Information Officer, is celebrating 30 years of service with the county. I'm sure you started as an intern, right? She began her career as a probation officer, eventually moving into information technology department. I would like to invite our CIO, Don Carlson, to tell us some more about Wendy's career and to share a few thoughts.
Thank you. So Wendy, like me, kind of came from a different background. I started wanting to be a city manager, and great that I ended up here, probably, considering some of the friends that I've had that have done it. It's a tough job, but a good time. Wendy, like me, ended up in probation, and somebody said one day, you work on computers, you look like you know what you're doing with them, and next thing you know, she's there, she's here, she's a network supervisor, network manager, deputy CIO. She's absolutely amazing, has done an amazing job. And one of the things I think that we've all witnessed over the last year is the pivot that we all had to make when the pandemic occurred, when it started, and Wendy and Joe orchestrating basically a thousand laptops that were very difficult to get to get people out of the office, getting them in on systems, into their systems, into their data, having them be just as effective from home as they are at work. And, you know, really, the pivot was led by Wendy, so I congratulate her on that. She does a lot of the day-to-day management of the department, which frees me up for more strategic things, and, you know, helping out with elected officials and other liaison or relationship activities, so it's a real great situation to be in. I want to congratulate her, 30 years, she's been awesome, and you'll carry on. I know, well, I'm not here for the next however many that you want to, but as Ashley said, she started out as an intern, so, and they're like 15 years old or something, so here she is. Here she is.
Thank you. I did actually start out as an intern at the probation department, and then I left in 1990 to go to law school and thought, I don't want to work that hard. That was a big mistake. I work way harder, I think now. But I came back in 91, so I've been here since then. It's been a great place to work, obviously. I wouldn't have stayed this long if it wasn't, and IT department's a great place to work, too. I love everybody in there, and it's like family, so thank you very much.
All right, Don, you got to stay. Greg, too. So today is our Chief Information Officer, Don Carlson's, last county board meeting. Don is retiring after a long career of 35 years in public service, including spending his last 10 here, right here with us at DuPage County. Don, you're a commensurate professional. You're smart, articulate, funny, thoughtful, and a creative and kind manager. You recognize talent and promote best practices. You've created one of the most professional, service-oriented departments on campus. Without your quick thinking and outstanding performances of your team, we would have not been able to seamlessly transition to virtual meetings or telework last year. We are all very much in both of your debt. I have a plaque to present which outlines just a few of your professional accomplishments. Get that. You're all greater stater today. The DuPage County Board expresses its appreciation to Donald J. Carlson for his countless contributions as the county's Chief Information Officer from 2010 through 2021. Donald J. Carlson is to be commended for his vision, leadership, and innovation, undertaking projects that improve the accessibility and transparency for residents, including implementing the county's Enterprise Resource Planning System, the computer-aided dispatch records management system, and for developing a county-wide strategic technology plan, all of which have made DuPage County a leader in technology. The DuPage County Board hereby honors Donald J. Carlson for his distinguished career in public service and wishes him happiness in his retirement.
I'm going to be brief, and I know we have a meeting to get going, but I wanted to say thanks to Chairman Cronin, to Chairwoman Solomon, who's sitting in today, standing in, thank you, and the county board for all your support. This was a true team effort over the last 10 years to really put a lot of systems in that, you know, was a transition from an old mainframe environment to new computing. So all-new case management systems for the state's attorney, for the public defender, for probation, CAT RMS, ERP, we did a lot. And when I say "we," that's the real thing here. It was county board departments, county board department heads, countywide electives and their staff, and especially the IT department staff, I want to call them out, because you really made me look good, and I appreciate it. And again, thanks to the board for the support. It was a lot to do and a lot of money, so, you know, I appreciate it.
We just want to say thank you to Don for all his years of service. I know a lot of focus has been put on the last year and the incredible challenges that the IT department, Don included, have had to go through to make sure that we remain operational. But I think Don's impact, and I said this in tech this morning, really stems from much before that. And the amount of strategic programs that he's shepherded throughout the county have really left it in a better place, more accessible for our constituents. And not to mention, it's been incredibly fun working with you from a standpoint, Don. So I am a little bit jealous that you're going to have so much more time for golf now, but we really thank you for all your years of service. And I think we had one more item that we wanted to give you, and that is this. We're putting a lot of use into this in the next couple of years.
It was on 234.
Exactly. But thank you, Don.
Thank you so much. Good to hear. Thank you. Stand in the photo. All right. One minute. We're so fortunate to have the talented staff we have here at DuPage County. This Friday, we'll be celebrating the great work of our health department staff and our many community healthcare partners who have been so instrumental in the rapid deployment of COVID vaccines in DuPage County. I hope all board members will be able to join Chairman Cronin, Member Garcia, and Health Board President Sam Tornatori for an event at 11:00 a.m. on Friday, April 30, at the community center. You should have all received a reminder in your emails, but if you don't have it, let us know. Also, it is not too late to register for the Regional Business Outlook tomorrow morning. Chairman Cronin will be speaking briefly, but the real draws, which is kind of rude to him, but that's okay, are the keynote speakers, Rick Bayless, and industry experts sharing their insights and perspectives on the evolving business climate in the Chicagoland area. It is a hybrid event, so you'll have a small audience at powered-forward DuPage and a larger audience that can view the event online. For more details, visit choosedupage.com. And lastly, we are on Day Two of Giving DuPage Days. I want to say a hearty thank you to all the members who have shared posts on social media, and some of you have even donated. We have until Friday to make a real impact, and we're very close to hitting $100,000 in funds raised, so if you want to make your gift, today's the day. That completes my chairman's report, and next is public comment. Do we have anyone here in person today? Nobody here in person? All right, and then our deputy clerk will read our online public comments.
Thank you, Vice Chair Solomon. We have two public comments submitting online today. The first is from Rebecca Fortner of Lombard. Subject is social media use. Comments: I am writing with concerns over the use of Facebook by our sheriff. While he does post some newsworthy items on a page on which he is identified as the sheriff of DuPage County, other items, particularly some that focus on pending legislation or current events and topics, seem meant to stoke further controversy. These can seem overtly political, and the comments that they garner are the same. These posts do not seem meant to inform the public, as they often provide no context or tangible information. This appears to be a campaign page that is kept active and updated, but also appears to represent the sheriff and his elected office as a law enforcement official. Is there a social media policy in place for county employees, including elected officials? Next comment is from Julie Yurko of Geneva. Subject: County Board Support for Northern Illinois Food Bank and the Agency Network. Thank you. Comment: Quote, "We went from having two incomes to support a family of five to having no income supporting a family of five." Vicky reported as she visited one of Northern Illinois Food Bank's pop-up markets this past year. What a blessing it is to have one less thing to think about at bill time, thanks to the food bank. Even with the pandemic causing lasting uncertainty, Vicky takes comfort in the food she knows she can rely on. When you know that you can at least have a full dinner table, then all has not fallen by the wayside. You can come around as a family and be grateful for what is on that table, she said. The food bank helps us to feel like we are going to make it. Northern Illinois Food Bank would like to thank the DuPage County Board for their generous 2020 grant of $625,000 from CARES Act funding that enabled the food bank to acquire nutritious food to meet the increased need for food assistance caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. The food bank was also able to use some of the funds to help member food pantries acquire much-needed equipment to safely accept, store, and distribute food to the increased number of neighbors in need. Between July 2020 and March 2021, the food bank network has distributed 14.3 million meals in DuPage County, an increase of 21% over the same period the previous year. This has been achieved by collaboration with 53 member food pantries and increased mobile pantry and pop-up market distributions. The number of food insecure residents in the county is estimated by Feeding America at 88,000, 10%, an increase from 56,000, 6% pre-COVID. The number of food insecure children is estimated at 24,260, 11%, an increase from 11,380, 5% the previous year. Northern Illinois Food Bank will continue to work to acquire and distribute food to meet the needs of DuPage County food insecure neighbors, and is anticipating increased costs for purchasing food as the federal coronavirus farmers assistance program, CFAP, will come to a close at the end of May. CFAP has provided pre-packed boxes of fresh produce, dairy, and protein that have been instrumental in helping the food bank increase the amount of food they are distributing." Ends the public comment.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, those are approved. Next is county board, and Member DeCiani, can you lead us, please?
Thank you, Chairman, Chairwoman. I'd ask for a motion on item CBR0257, there's 21, a resolution in support of mandated Medicaid coverage of ABA therapy for children with autism.
So moved your second.
All righty. I thank everybody for putting this on today's agenda. We were going to put this through legislative, but the legislative's in motion until 4:30. So considering what's happening here with timing on this issue, if anybody saw Capitol Facts last week, this was a hot-button issue of a law that we all supported back in 2019. In fact, really, the law kind of originated from DuPage County. The members that were here prior to the last election all unanimously approved a resolution, kind of calling out the state of Illinois, who was not following the 2014 mandate that all people with disabilities receive medically necessary treatment, diagnosis and treatment for their conditions. And specifically, ABA therapy for kids with autism is not being covered by Illinois' Medicaid system. One in three children in DuPage County are on Medicaid, to put that in perspective. We have roughly 30,000 children in Illinois with autism who are on Medicaid, of the 1.4 million children in Illinois who are on Medicaid. So this is a big issue, and kids that are black, brown, white, of all different ethnicities, are not getting coverage. I've had the pleasure of making sure that my daughter, before the insurance law back in 2008 was passed, got ABA. It's expensive. It's 30, 40, 50,000 dollars a year for a kid to get this kind of therapy if they need it, but it works. And I have a kid that's on the honor roll at York, who's college-bound, plays sports, and that's really what it's all about, is giving kids the opportunity to be at their highest level. So we passed in 2019 this law, and it's a great law. And our governor came up with 42 million in his budget, which gets a federal match, it's 84 million dollars. It's a lot of therapy to put on a lot of fires. Fortunately, when the rules are promulgated as to who can provide this therapy, a double requirement is placed. requirement is placed on that person. We have roughly 4,000 providers of ABA therapy here in Illinois under private insurance. Most of those are overseen by what's called a BCBA. It's a master degree person that specializes just in behavioral therapy. There's still requirement of a social worker license, and/or a clinical psychologist is putting providers at only 17, 17 or 18 in the state of Illinois. Thus, virtually no kids are getting the services. So, it's important, this was all over the Tribune last week, all over the Herald, all over Capitol Facts, that this becomes, that this burden is lifted, and that all of our kids, no matter how rich or poor they are, can get the services that they need. So, I appreciate everybody supporting this, and this is going to send, I think, a lightning ride to Springfield to get their stuff together, and that's in nicely. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Member DeCiani. We have a motion and a second, and let's call the roll, please.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Hecoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kraduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy.
Aye.
Solomon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Hecoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kraduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy.
Aye.
Solomon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
And Zay.
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes. Member Chaplin?
Thank you. I move to approve FIR 025021, Resolution Acceptance of an Extension of Time through December 31, 2021, for the Low Income Home Energy Assisted Program, COM Ed Relief Program for year 2020.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We need to call the roll.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Hecoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kraduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy.
Aye.
Solomon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
And Zay.
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes. Member Chaplin?
Thank you. I move to approve FIR 025021, Resolution Acceptance of an Extension of Time through December 31, 2021, for the Low Income Home Energy Assisted Program, COM Ed Relief Program for year 2020.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We need to call the roll.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Hecoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kraduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy.
Aye.
Solomon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
And Zay.
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes. Member Chaplin?
Thank you. I move on FIR 025321, Resolution Revision of the Personnel Budget Public Defender's Office.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin?
I move on FIR 025421, Resolution Revision to the Personnel Policy Manual.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin?
Thank you. I move on FIR 025521, Resolution Placing Names on Payroll.
Leave is granted.
Thank you. I move on FIR 025621, Resolution Authorization of a Contract with the Policemen's Benevolent Labor Committee Local 501, C for Employees of the DuPage County Sheriff expiring November 30th, 2022.
Leave is granted.
I move approval of FIR 025821, Resolution Budget Transfers 42721 from various companies and accounting units.
Leave is granted.
Thank you. I move on FIP 009821, Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract Purchase Orders to Sterno, Romella, and Durkin to Provide Professional Assistance in the Collective Bargaining for County Board. This contract covers a period of May 1, 2021 through April 30th, 2022, for a contract total amount not to exceed $150,000.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Chaplin.
Thank you.
Next up is Development, Member Sam Tornatori.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple of things. On item B, the petitioner has withdrawn the petition, so that will not be brought forward this morning. And on item E, I have a personal and professional relationship with the petitioner, so I will be recusing myself on item E. Moving forward, I will entertain a motion to approve DCO 2721, Ordinance Z 215, Redenberger Holdings LLC. This is zoning relief of a variation to reduce a front yard setback, variation to reduce a south side setback, variation to reduce a rear setback, variation to reduce the required parking spaces, variation for the required landscape requirements. This was denied by the zoning hearing officer, as well as it failed at development, and I vote will be different than what has transpired earlier, and no vote will be consistent with the zoning hearing officer and the development committee's decisions. I move approval.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Tornatori.
No.
Zay.
No.
Chaplin.
No.
Chavez.
No.
Covert.
No.
Desart.
No.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Hecoff.
No.
Garcia.
No.
Hart.
No.
Kraduski.
No.
LaPlante.
No.
Ozog.
No.
Pachowski.
No.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy.
Aye.
And Solomon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Hecoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kraduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy.
Aye.
And Solomon.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move approval of DCO 3121, Ordinance Z 2110, Carlevitz. This is approval of a variation to reduce the 30-foot corner side setback to approximately 13 feet for new concrete pool and deck, recommended by the zoning hearing officer and the development committee.
Second most favorable roll. Leave is granted.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I will be leaving the room and refuse myself, and Vice Chair Garcia will be moving forward.
Thank you. For record, a flex member Tornatori is stepping out for this vote. Member Garcia.
I like the motion for DCO 003221, Ordinance Z 2101, to approve the following zoning relief from zoning from R2 Single Family and B2 to OR, and conditional use for planned development for outside storage of commercial vehicles and warehouse. Exception to reduce the setbacks for existing building on the property, front yard along the North Avenue from 50 feet to approximately 3.92 feet for the existing building, and corner side yard along Morton Road from 60 feet to approximately 20 feet for the existing
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kraduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy.
Aye.
And Solomon.
Aye.
Thank you, Member Tornatori. Next up, Economic Development, Member Amy Chavez, please.
Thank you, Chairwoman. I would like to move approval for recommendation of a contract purchase order to Carroll Street Chamber of Commerce for one-stop operator services for the period of July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2023. This is for workforce development for a contract total amount not to exceed $41,254, and its bid number 218WD.
All right, we have a motion and a second on EDP 96-21. Please call the roll.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Hecoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kraduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy.
Aye.
And Solomon.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move approval of DCO 3121, Ordinance Z 2110, Carlevitz. This is approval of a variation to reduce the 30-foot corner side setback to approximately 13 feet for new concrete pool and deck, recommended by the zoning hearing officer and the development committee.
Second most favorable roll. Leave is granted.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I will be leaving the room and refuse myself, and Vice Chair Garcia will be moving forward.
Thank you. For record, a flex member Tornatori is stepping out for this vote. Member Garcia.
I like the motion for DCO 003221, Ordinance Z 2101, to approve the following zoning relief from zoning from R2 Single Family and B2 to OR, and conditional use for planned development for outside storage of commercial vehicles and warehouse. Exception to reduce the setbacks for existing building on the property, front yard along the North Avenue from 50 feet to approximately 3.92 feet for the existing building, and corner side yard along Morton Road from 60 feet to approximately 20 feet for the existing building.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kraduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy.
Aye.
And Solomon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Hecoff.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kraduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy.
Aye.
Solomon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Hecoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kraduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Kuduski? LaPlante? Ozog?
Aye.
And Pachowski?
I move approval of HHS R24721, Release of DuPage County deed restrictions with DuPage Community Housing and Advocacy and Development, FKA Community Housing Association, 27 properties.
Leave is granted.
So nice and fast now. I move approval of HHS R24821, Approval of Second Modification of Home Investment Partnerships, Understanding with DuPage County Community Services and the County Tenant-Based Rental Assistance, $338,599.
Second most favorable roll. Leave is granted.
I move approval of HHS R24321, Authorization to Apply for FY 2020 and 2021, Section 5310 Grant Funds from the RTA.
Second most favorable roll. Leave is granted.
Move approval of HHS R25121, Authorization to Apply for FY 2022, Title 3B Aging Disability Resource Network Access Grant Funds and Transportation Grant Funds.
Second most favorable roll.
Thank you. I move approval of HHS R24421, Authorizing Execution of an IGA with Pace Suburban Bus for Senior Transportation, $60,000.
Second most favorable roll.
Move approval of HHS R24921, Execution of IGA with Pace Suburban Bus for Paratransit and Transportation Program, $850,000.
Second most favorable roll.
And finally, move approval of HHS P9321, Approval of Contract Purchase Order with Warehouse Direct for Soap, Sanitizer, Lotion, Sandpoo, Body Wash with the Care Center, May 28, 2021 through May 27, 2022, Contract Amount of $36,000.
Second most favorable roll. Leave is granted. Thank you. Next up, Judicial and Public Safety. Member Renahan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to follow up on our discussion of our last county board meeting, body cameras for the sheriff were ordered that Tuesday afternoon, received early last week, so we are on our way to performing our statutory duties here. Just to let everyone know. And I'll move approval of JPS R25221, Acceptance and Appropriation of DuPage County Health Department Heroine Opioid Prevention and Education, First Avenger Court Unified for Success Court Grant, $25,000 probation court services.
We have a motion and a second. Member Hart, call the roll.
Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Schworzy?
Aye.
Selman?
Aye.
Tornatori?
Aye.
Zay? Chaplin? Chavez?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
DeCiani? Echoff? Garcia?
Aye.
Hart? Kuduski?
Aye.
LaPlante? Ozog?
Aye.
And Pachowski?
Thank you. Member Renahan?
Thank you, Chair. I move approval of JPS P8921, Recommendation for Approval of Contract with Agilent Technologies to Provide an Inert Extractor Ion and ESP for the Crime Lab Not to Exceed $97,432.75.
Second most favorable roll. Leave is granted.
Thank you, Chair. I move to discharge the JPS Committee from JPS CO 4-21, Amendment to Resolution JPS P3420 with Momkus for the Special Assistant State's Attorney Not to Exceed $50,000.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Sorry about our committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Please continue.
Thank you, Chair. I move approval of JPS CO 4-21, Amendment to Resolution JPS P3420, Momkus LLC, Legal Representation as Special Assistant State's Attorney Not to Exceed $50,000.
Second most favorable roll. Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Renahan. Next up is Public Works. Member Mary Ozog?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. First of all, I want to thank everybody. Public Works, Sean Reese, and Angela arranged it for me. I went to visit the Woodridge Wastewater Facility, and I learned an awful lot, and I got to do some Stairmaster as well. It's an amazing facility, so if you get a chance to get out there, they do a great job, and it's very large, and I learned a lot, so that was great. I'd like to move for approval of FMP 009421, of an approval of a contract to Groot Incorporated to provide refuse disposal, recycling, and asbestos pickup services for DuPage County facilities, for facilities management for the period June 1, 2021 through May 31, 2022, for a contract total amount not to exceed $96,510, per renewal option under bid award 1733BF, third and final option to renew.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Ozog?
Yes.
Pachowski? Pachowski? Renahan? Rutledge?
Aye.
Schworzy?
Aye.
Selman?
Aye.
Tornatori?
Aye.
Zay?
Aye.
Chaplin?
Aye.
Chavez?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
DeCiani? Echoff? Garcia?
Aye.
Hart? Kuduski?
Aye.
And LaPlante?
All right, while she carries, the rose off?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd like to move to approve FMP 009521, Approval of a Contract to Technica Environmental Services Incorporated to fill in place three underground fuel storage tanks located near the power plant for facilities management for the period through November 30, 2021, excuse me, for a contract total amount not to exceed $52,900 per lowest responsible bid.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Ozog.
Thank you.
Next up, Stormwater. Members, they do have a committee update?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a committee update. We had a lot of issues today or presentations, so I didn't want to take away from our retirements and anniversary. But I did want to tell the county board that Illinois Association of Floodplain and Stormwater Management recently awarded DuPage County the 2021 Mitigation Award during their annual conference held in March. DuPage County Stormwater Management and Community Service Departments were for their efforts to mitigate flooding countywide using nearly $32 million grant from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development following the floods in 2013. These funds, the county strategically implemented shovel-ready mitigation projects and focused on property buyouts that will benefit communities for years. We recognized quickly that areas affected could not be repaired. They also needed to be protected against future floods. In total, the county partnering municipalities completed 17 flood mitigation projects using these funds, as well as several flood-prone property buyouts. Notable county projects included the Armstrong Park Reservoir in Carroll Stream, the West Branch DuPage River Restoration Remandering in Warrenville, and the Redmond Reservoir Expansion Project in Bensonville. I'd like to thank our Stormwater Management and Community Development staff and Chair Renahan for managing these initiatives and helping earn this recognition. We couldn't have done it with work together. And the county received through CDBG funds and the Presidential Declaration of Disaster allocations. We got $7 million in 2013, $18.9 million in 2014, and $5.6 million in 2015. So at the time we were shovel-ready, we were able to go and get these projects done, which has made a lasting effect here in DuPage County on flooding. And I will show the award. Staff told me not to drop it because they don't trust me. But again, I did want to recognize them. I didn't want to take away from the other presentations today, but it's a great working with our community service and with Stormwater to use those federal funds to do a lot of good here in DuPage County for flooding.
Great. Thank you so much, Madam Chair. All right, next up is Technology. Vice Chair Hart, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move on TEP 97-21, Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract Purchase Order to Intellius Inc. for Professional Services to Install Required Updates for Incore Ancillary Systems.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Hart?
Aye.
Kuduski? LaPlante? Ozog?
Aye.
Pachowski?
Aye.
Renahan? Rutledge?
Aye.
Schworzy?
Aye.
Selman?
Aye.
Tornatori? Zay? Chaplin?
Aye.
Chavez?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
DeCiani? Echoff? And Garcia?
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move on TEP 99-21, Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract Purchase Order to Epic server Inc. for Annual Maintenance Fees for Ectron CMS 400.
Second most favorable roll. Leave is granted.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lastly, I move on Item C, a Change Order, TEP 325C-19, Amendment to Resolution, TEP 325-19, Issued to Salco Partnership Doing Businesses for Rising Wireless.
Second most favorable roll. Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Hart. Next up, Transportation. Member Pachowski?
Good morning, Chairwoman Selman. I would move to approve DTR 24221 and a Resolution to H&amp;H Electric Company for Mast Arm Replacement Traffic Signal Moplications at various intersections for a county cost of $612,103.55 with this little bid.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Pachowski?
Aye.
Renahan? Rutledge? Schworzy?
Aye.
Selman?
Aye.
Tornatori? Zay? Chaplin? Chavez?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
DeCiani? Echoff? Garcia?
Aye.
Hart? Kuduski? Plant? And Ozog?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I've moved to approve DTP 9021, A Contract to Mandled Metals Inc. to Furnish and Deliver Aluminum Side Planks as Needed for a amount not to exceed $42,571.32.
Leave is granted. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Move to approve DTP 9121, A Contract to Westside Tractor Sales Inc. to Furnish and Deliver John Deere Repair and Replacement Parts as Needed for a Contract Not to Exceed $30,000.
Leave is granted.
And finally, Madam Chairwoman, I move to approve DTP 9221, A Contract to Alcoa for Industries to Furnish and Deliver Caterpillar Repair and Replacement Parts for a Contract Not to Exceed $45,000.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Pachowski. Next item on our agenda is Discussion. This is the Discussion Item PA 99-646, Pension Obligation Projection Required by Local Government Wage Increase Transparency Act. Is anyone seeking recognition on this item? All right, seeing none. Next up is Old Business. Do we have any old business? Member Chaplin?
I'm sorry. So, thanks so much. So, I just wanted to let the board know. Last year, I brought forward having Juneteenth as a holiday for our 2021 calendar, and that didn't pass. The board didn't support it. You know, I thought we could really be leaders on that. Well, both the Illinois General Assembly, House, and State, both, Juneteenth has a holiday passed both the House and Senate unanimously. So, Illinois will recognize Juneteenth as a state holiday, and therefore, our employees and all state employees will be able to celebrate and learn about Juneteenth. So I'm extremely pleased with that.
Member Echoff and then Member Hart, please.
Both my friend Sheila Rutledge and I have spoken over the last few months about having the flags raised. And during this meeting, Chief Briggs informed me that the flags are finally being raised today, and I think that's a good thing, and he's been on top of it. We've had a few bumps on the road since the governor authorized it, a couple other reasons to keep it low, but now it's been raised, so happy about that.
Thank you, Member Echoff. Member Hart?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to, I want to, no, you're good. I want to, I want to repeat what you said earlier at the onset of your chairwoman's remarks, which is a plug for Giving DuPage Days. As many of us know, Giving DuPage Day has kicked off on April 26 and will complete this Friday. And since we've been here, we've actually raised $3,000 more dollars as of looking at the ticker here. So we really appreciate all the help and support that board members have given to this item. I know Member Rutledge has donated, Member Schworzy's been promoting it on social media. And Member Selman and I just ask that everyone do their part to help really draw awareness to this event. It does a lot of good in our county, especially for the nonprofits that not only the county partners with, but those that provide a lot of helpful services to residents most in need. So you can go to givingdupageday.org to learn more and to set up your own page. And again, anything publicly you can add would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Hart. Anybody else under Old Business? Members Zay, Kuduski, and then Member Ozog?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now, over the last several meetings, we've had some heated discussions here and JPS, and I just wanted to bring forward a couple of things that I think, as we move forward, I think we need to recognize. And Joe, if you could put that first one up. You know, this board back in August passed of 2020, passed three resolutions that should be, that the voters voted on in November. First question was, shall DuPage County continue to consider financial support of law enforcement and public safety as top budgeting priority? In that election in November, that passed the people with 73.88% of the vote. 342,681 people voted for that. So when we move forward, that seems like a priority here in DuPage County. The one that we really need to look at, and that I think shows some of our passion, some of our members, question three was, shall DuPage County continue to fund and support training methods that decrease the risk of injury to officers, suspects for local law enforcement agencies? Same thing we had talked about with getting rid of training, the virtual reality. That passed the election with 90.02% of the vote. 420,200 people voted for that. So I think that's a clear message from the people here in DuPage County, that law enforcement, paying for it and training our people to protect themselves and our residents, is a priority here. And I hope as we move forward, we're hearing that, as the sheriff has already brought personnel forward for this year, and we've heard that we're not going to look at that until 2022, I think that needs to be rethought, because this is things that we need here for our county. The voters have told us this is a priority. So instead of pushing it off until December of 2021, when the new budget's passed, some of these things need to be done sooner to implement these policies of the state and to protect our residents. So I hope that we'll move forward and fund our law enforcement and our public safety people in the means that they need and the means that will help here the people in DuPage County.
Thank you, Members Zay. Member Kuduski?
Oh, thank you, Chairwoman Selman. And just to pick up on, I guess, what you and Member Hart said, and being on the board of Giving DuPage, and we've gone over $100,000 now, and talking about the sheriff's office. I know their canines have been over now, and we take care of the canines. They used to go into city, but our animal services take care of them. So I know they've been out there promoting Giving DuPage also, since they get good care over there. The top seven, we've raised over $100,000, but the top seven organizations, four of them are animal ones on National Therapy Day. So, DuPage Animal Friends is number one, which helps supports us, and then you've got West Suburban Humane Society, Feral Fixers. Feral Fixers is number five right now, but they're the ones that, we do all of their spay and neuters on our mobile van that we brought in a couple of years ago, that we got a grant to fund the whole thing. And then Shytown Fitties is number seven, but they're ones, that rescue pulls the animals from us.